The Parker Town Council for January 3rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. All members are present with the exception of Councilmember Hendricks. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and if there's more public comment, we'll take it at the end of the meeting. You must sign up ahead of time in order to provide comments. However, we do a lot for walk-ons here, so the only other way is to email the town clerk's office before 5:00 on the day of the council meeting, and that will be entered into the record. We have no emails. Do we have anybody wishing to make a public comment? Mr. Morrison, come on down.
Since I was here.
All right, and if you'll state your...
I, every year, talk about the signs that say if two inches or more, no parking and two-hour parking limits. If we cannot have the resources or the manpower to enforce it, let's please take the signs down. The cars that are still covered in snow and have been for numerous weeks after multiple two-inch storm events, there are no citations and nothing has been done. So again, either enforce it, or if you don't have the resources, please take the signs down. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to reports, items, and comments from the mayor and council, and I will start to my right with our newest council member, Councilmember Wilkes.
Of course, you're starting with me. I don't know what to do.
Trial by heart.
So I did the Reefs Across America, which was fantastic. I did that with our mayor and with fellow council members, Diak, Rivero, and Hefta, and that was at the Parker Cemetery. It was awesome just to be able to honor our buried soldiers and our buried vets that were there. I didn't realize how many we actually had at the Parker Cemetery, so that was humbling. And then I'm just continuing my trainings, including learning what to do right now. So all of that's fantastic, and yeah.
Councilmember Rivero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been fairly quiet during the holiday season. It's a nice little break. I have done some work as an executive committee with Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority regarding state regulations. We are challenging some regulations. They're, I will say, the state is asking us to, but they are cooperating, and I think we're going to have some good outcomes. It was a little bit busy when I prefer to be at rest during the holidays, but I think we're going to get some good stuff done.
Councilmember Diak?
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to all. I think we're still in the holiday season, I believe. Way back in December, I had an interview with the Parker Economic Development, Puma. We're engaging Puma to create an economic development plan, so they talked to most, if not all, of the council members at that time to get some information so they can do their work. Dr. Cog, we had a board of directors meeting. We had one item, the Family Act. Like most other municipalities, they voted to opt out, but still allow the employees to opt in if they so chose. On the 28th, I had a Dr. Cog nominating committee meeting. What we had to do is, we were tasked with, was to review applications of potential executive committee members and to recommend a slate to the board, and that will be forthcoming here shortly. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome, Councilmember Wilkes, to your first official meeting. It has been kind of a quiet holiday season, but since our last meeting at the Swearing Inn, I attended a Downtown Business Alliance Christmas party, and on December 15th, Douglas County Housing Partnership meeting. But other than that, it's been very quiet.
Councilmember Hefta?
Most of us attended the Christmas parade, and Councilmember Wilkes did attend with the DBA. We did attend the Reefs Across America as well. We did interview for a temporary judge position, myself and Councilmember Rivero, and that actually took two days, so that was kind of busy, actually, for us. We did, I did attend a Hanukkah celebration, Festival of Lights, with the mayor, and I did enjoy celebrating Christmas with my family all throughout Parker, and thank you to the town staff for the beautiful holiday decorations and all your hard work, and thank you for the snow plowing, to public works and engineering and keeping our town running. Saw everybody out there getting the snow plowed, and so, once again, just feeling very grateful for my health this year, wonderful holiday season I had this year, and also grateful for such a great town, when you look around and how well it's run and how professional it is. There's a lot to be grateful for, so thank you.
Well said, well said. All right, next up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have item 4A through 4F for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4F, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivero, second by Councilmember Wilkes. Rivero?
Aye.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Diak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Next up on the agenda is the first of two resolutions, Resolution Number 23-002, a resolution to appoint new members and alternates on the town of Parker Special Licensing Authority. Our town clerk making her way down.
Good evening, mayor and council. So yes, every year, you all appoint either two members, two regular members, or two, three, or two members, and two alternate members. This year, you're appointing three regular members and two alternate members, and you're appointing a chair and a vice chair. So I'm going to have the authority members come up. Come on up. So you can put a name with a face. This is Kelly Nardi. She is being recommended as a chair. This is Rick Milburn. He is an alternate. Mike Appleby, he is up for appointment next, at the end of 2023, but he is being recommended to be the vice chair. And then we have RD Coons. He is also an alternate, new this year. We have John Brusco, who is a regular member. We have Brian Campbell, whose appointment is up at the end of 2023, but we wanted to put a name with a face. And then we have Greg Simpson, who was an alternate and is now being appointed as a regular member.
During the process, just so you can stare at them as they're approving you. Appleby's safe for this go-around, but you know, he'll be up again. So let's start with any questions for the town clerk on the process or anything. Councilmember Rivero?
Mr. Campbell, is that a Marie Tartan on your head?
Campbell.
Just kidding.
Councilmember Wilkes?
No, I actually got to be a part of the interview process for the appointments for the new members coming in.
Councilmember Diak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I'd like to ask each one of the appointees a question. Name one thing you hope to accomplish this year serving on this board.
Oh, boy. I hope to have a fair process for any of the applicants, especially when we have show cause hearings. Those are a little challenging, but we want to treat everybody fairly, and I want to make sure all the members of the authority are heard and have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments, and get lots more restaurants and bars in Parker.
Same question, I assume. Being new, I hope to learn a lot from the existing board, and I also would like to make sure that we do a fair process to everyone that applies. Other than that, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
I have to continue to learn the process in case our chairman decides not to show up sometime, and I reiterate what she said, just offer a fair process to the businesses of Parker.
I've lived in Parker going on 20 years and have not really been involved with the city that much due to jobs in retail, so I have the opportunity now, being retired, to get more involved with my city, and that's what I'm hoping to do and learn more about the aspect of what's going on.
Trying to come up with something unique that hasn't been already said by them. So yeah, to continue my support for the Special Licensing Committee, I'd like to, you know, continue to understand and evolve my knowledge of the processes, but also support, you know, the other, the other members on the committee as well.
So for me, 45 years of business process reengineering, it's all about efficiency, and in this context, efficiency for the staff, efficiency for the city, efficiency for business applicants, but also for the citizens of the city who deserve to have a fair and equal voice in applications for liquor license and any adjudication related to problems with those licenses.
Last year, I enjoyed learning about some of the restaurants I didn't know about and some of the events that I didn't know happened, so it was good to hear what their points were, what their focus was, and I hope to do more of that, learn more of what's going on, and see what kind of events happen.
Always Councilmember Hefta with the question for everybody, so great job, Flora, on that. All right, with that, I'm going to open up for public comment on this appointment of resolutions at 7:12. Anybody from the public wishing to make a comment on this resolution, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close it at 7:13 and bring it back to the council. Council, unless there's any other debate, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
I make a move to approve Resolution Number 23-002 as part of the regular agenda.
I second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hefta, second by Councilmember Wilkes. Rivero?
Aye.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Diak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Congratulations. All right, we're going to get a picture with you guys, so.
On the count of three. One, two, and three. Take a couple. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next up is Resolution Number 23-005, a resolution to appoint an assistant judge for the Parker Municipal Court.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. This resolution appoints Courtney Patterson as an Assistant Municipal Judge to serve temporarily as a substitute municipal court judge until a permanent presiding municipal court judge can be appointed. The Assistant Municipal Court Judge will then serve in the case of temporary absence, sickness, disqualification, or other inability of the municipal court judge to act. The resolution provides that the compensation for the Assistant Municipal Judge is $85 per hour. Staff is also recommending that we enter into an agreement for professional services with Ms. Patterson for a term ending on December 31st, 2023. And Ms. Patterson is here this evening. If I could introduce you to her?
Come on down, because Councilmember Hefta's going to have a question for you, so.
I'm ready for it.
All right, all right. Councilmember Rivero, you want to start off? Any questions?
I yield to Councilwoman Hefta.
Councilmember Wilkes?
Nope.
Councilmember Diak?
You know, I was going to say, what do you expect to learn this year, but that was earned to use, so I'll yield as well.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
And here it comes, are you ready? Councilmember Hefta?
So Judge Patterson, if you will, just give us a brief synopsis of your legal background and your experience in both civil and criminal law, and how many years you've been practicing in it as an attorney, and how many years you've been practicing as a judge.
All right. I've been a licensed attorney since 2004. I was first licensed in California. I've been licensed in Colorado since 2015. I've worked as a deputy district attorney in the San Francisco Bay Area, and then I worked for about a year and a half doing municipal court defense of municipalities in California cities, school district primarily. In Colorado, I started my own firm in 2015. I do about a 50/50 mix of federal civil litigation and municipal defense work, mostly traffic tickets. In addition, I worked as a city attorney prosecutor for the city of Arvada for about a year and a half. I also have judicial experience. I work as a municipal court judge in Fort Collins, Loveland, Longmont, Thornton, Westminster, and was just recently appointed to Estes Park. Did that cover it?
Does it cover it?
And what are you most looking forward to, serving as our judge in the town of Parker?
I'm hoping to ensure that there is transparency with the court and making sure that the public feels that there's, they can have confidence in and trust in the judicial system, which seems to be waning these days in a lot of areas.
Awesome. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to open up for public comment on the appointment of our assistant judge in Resolution Number 23-005. Anyone from the public wishing to make comments? Don't look over at Sean, dude. You don't want that. I know. All right, with that, I'll close it at 7:18 and bring it back to the council for a motion on the approval of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 23-005, and the staff recommendation to enter into an agreement for professional services.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivero, second by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Wilkes?
Aye.
Diak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes, and welcome, Judge Patterson.
And that passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much.
So can we get a picture with you?
Of course.
It's not often that we get a judge, yeah, it's not often we get appointed judge.
It's not often we go to Dan.
One step that way. One, two, three. One, one, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, council, we've got to get some work done today. Ceremonies are great, but item number six is agreements, and we're going to talk about the Sixth Amendment to amend and restated Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement. I believe we have Mr. Mustag. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good evening, mayor and council. That stated before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement, also known as the Anthology North or Tantera property. There we go, okay. The first slide here is a vicinity map, it's kind of a refresher of this property. The Tantera property, Anthology North, is located in the southwest part of the town of Parker, roughly bounded by Hess Road on the north, Matsumbaka on the east, and then Stro Road on the south, current and Stro Road on the south. This property is getting ready to be slated for its first segment of development. This property is going to be constructing quite a bit of public infrastructure, both regional roadways like Chambers Road, Stro Road, a number of collector roadways, and then also regional drainage improvements and bridges over Oak Gulch. And with that, the property owner and prospective developer have requested an annexation agreement amendment to cover three points. First two are public works related, I'll give you more details on those. The last is a planning item that Bryce will cover. The first item is to allow for traffic signal obligations to be initially met through the provision of the letter of credit rather than a cash payment, although an escalated cash payment would be required later on in the process. The second item is to allow for required security for future segments of Stro Road to be provided via a letter of credit rather than cash. And the third item is to allow for an obligation for a segment of the Oak Gulch Regional Trail to be satisfied by the provision of cash and loo to the town, and also removes an obligation for a pedestrian crossing of Oak Gulch. The first item related to traffic signals, the current agreement for the property does require the property owner to be responsible for all costs of designing and constructing all necessary traffic signals within the property. These obligations are pretty common in our subdivisions. They're typically met with a cash payment from the developer to the town upon the plat, the time of the recognition of the final plat for the subdivision. It's done that way because typically traffic signals are not needed to be built on day one in a subdivision. Typically, a subdivision will need to be fully built out, traffic will need to increase over the years before traffic volumes warrant a traffic signal installation. So with the cash payment the town typically receives, that gives us the ability, the funds to design and construct a signal at a later date when it's warranted by traffic volumes. We think that'll be the case here as well. However, in this case, the developer, rather than providing the cash upfront, has requested the ability to give us a letter of credit instead. A letter of credit is essentially a guarantee from a bank that the developer works with that is essentially a cash equivalent for us. We can go pull on that and get the same amount of cash that we would have at any time. The developer would like to do that because of, with all the infrastructure they're planning to build, that is a heavy cash outlay upfront between all the town infrastructure, Parker Water and Sanitation District, drainage improvements, so they're trying to get some flexibility in how much cash they have to outlay upfront. Staff's comfortable with the letter of credit, and the benefit to the town in this case would be that the letter of credit would be required to be replaced with a cash payment prior to the initial acceptance of the original construction of their infrastructure, and that would be an escalated amount. So essentially, we would escalate by the construction cost index, the amount of a signal based annually, based on how many years it takes them to complete the construction. So if a traffic signal is $500,000 now, we would escalate that by a year, and so the cash payment would be higher when we actually received it. So we would be able to recapture some of the cost increases that we've seen in the construction industry over the past couple of years with this cash payment. So with that, you know, staff is comfortable with this potential revision. The second item is relatively similar. The current agreement for the property obligates the property owner to provide financial security for any portions of Chambers or Stro Road, which are kind of the two regional roadways on the property, for any segments of them that they're not planning to build with a segment of development. And that security is calculated, it's basically a pro-rata share per every lot that they're planning with that segment, and the town holds that security until that section of the roadway is eventually planned to be built and formally secured down the road. And the reason we have this in the agreement is just to really to make sure these roads get built upfront, that the developers can't pick off certain areas of the development that may not require them to build those roads and kind of kick it down the road to later segments. So they either have to build them upfront or start giving us security for the lots that they're providing. So the current agreement describes the security as a payment. That's the exact wording, so really it suggests it should be a cash payment. Again, the developer would like the flexibility to use a letter of credit for this. Again, with our letter of credit being pretty strong, the form being pretty strong as far as guarantees getting that cash, you know, I think against staff that is comfortable with that as well. And with that, I will pass it to Bryce for the trail item.
Thanks, Alex. Thanks, mayor and council. So the graphic on the slideshow shows the Oak Gulch Regional Trail, which runs parallel to Hess Road on the south side. The current annexation agreement requires the Sunmark developer to construct the Oak Gulch Trail to Tammy Lane. Sunmark Development is on the right hand of the screen up there. The Sunmark developer constructed a portion of the trail immediately adjacent to the development from Matsumbaka Road, almost to where you see the point that says current obligation for a crossing. There are two proposed changes as a part of the annexation agreement as they relate to trails. One is the unbuilt portion of the trail will be built with the larger dendritic channel improvements by the town and funded through cash and loo. This will reduce construction disturbances to the drainage and prevent having to construct sections of the trail twice. The second is the proposal would remove a proposed connection between Oak Gulch Trail and Hess Road across from, sorry, across from Horseshoe Ridge. So there are two reasons... Are we talking about the pedestrian bridge?
Yeah.
So there will not be a pedestrian bridge. There'll be a crossing at Matsumbaka and one at Tammy Lane, but not one in the middle.
Okay, so Tammy Lane will have a crossing with a light, with a pedestrian?
There will eventually be a traffic light at Tammy Lane and Hess.
Okay. That's helpful, because they have two points to cross right now, Hess and then Tammy Lane. Tammy Lane doesn't exist right now, and there's a lot of folks that live in the back in Tammy Lane there, and the folks want to get across the road. They'll have to walk down a ways if they want to go to the Horseshoe Ridge Subdivision Park, but there's a way to cross the road eventually when the subdivision gets built out.
Correct. Councilmember Barrington?
Thank you. So is this in any way going to help speed up the process of Chambers? I'm just kidding, Mr. Elliott.
But ask that again when he gets up here.
Yeah. So historically, for cash and loo, if the cost did go up, there's really no recourse. So this sounds like it would be a win-win for both the developer and for us. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, and Alex, how many decades or how many years have we used letters of credit?
Many.
Many. Have we ever had any issues with letters of credit in general?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you.
And we strengthened our form over the years, so it's good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
None.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Alex. First, on the letters of credit, just for my education and maybe education of the public, talk to me about what that is. How does that guarantee the town's going to communitate whole? Talk to me about the guarantees there, and I mean, to sign you a letter, you know, said developer not that this will, but said developer goes bankrupt, where are we? How does that stand? And we don't have cash in the bank right now, but we have a letter of credit. How does that stand in the future?
Yeah, and maybe Chris can weigh in as well, but you know, we have a standard form. The town has a standard form letter of credit that has to go through our legal review. We accept, there's a number of requirements, but essentially we've learned over the years what some of the pitfalls are. You know, we want to have it be either a local bank or a bank that have, I forget what the noticing for, there are certain requirements for out-of-state banks. So essentially, it has an expiration date. We don't allow any conditions in it, so as long as we present that letter of credit to the bank before the expiration date, we are granted that cash, is my understanding. Anything to add, Chris?
Yeah, correct. Just think of it as the bank makes a promise to pay if there's any sort of default under the specified agreement for that letter of credit. We go to the bank and tell them that there has been a default, and we need them to pay the money that they have promised to pay in that event, and they pay it over.
Those are the words I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. And then secondly, on letters of credit and traffic lights versus roads, is it also beneficial to us, instead of getting cash, that construction cost is rise for building roads, is it beneficial us to also have letters of credit on road building in as far as getting more money?
I mean, theoretically, they're the same arrangement, but they're planning to actually build.
Exactly. This case is special.
There's no payments for future roads. They're going to be constructing everything with this development.
But are we using this example going forward, maybe switching more towards letters of credit than cash?
If that's something that council is interested in, we could certainly offer that option.
Interesting. Thank you. And then on the trail, I think councilman Hefta asked, at the Tammy Lane crossing, there will be an at-grade crossing when that light is installed?
Correct.
No tunnels, no bridges?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, any other questions for staff? Mr. Elliott, come on up.
Thank you. I'm going to seize this opportunity, not so much to make a presentation, but to answer trustee Barrington's questions and any others that you might have. We are under constant barrage from your staff to get this project rolling. And I was mentioning before we got started that there's actually a number of folks within the community that have my phone number. I don't know how they got that, but they're calling, asking the same thing. And I actually have to laugh that members of the public, neighbors of a new community of ours, I don't think I've ever gotten a call from one of them saying, "So when are you going to get started?" So I'm excited by that. We're excited to get going. Right now, our expectation is that we still have a couple of Ts to cross and a couple Is to dot with staff with regard to the subdivision improvement agreement, but I think we're making progress in getting that done with an expectation that within the next couple of weeks, we can have something that we can come back to you with in that regard, and then look to get started in February. So that's where we are.
Councilor Dyak, any questions?
How many pickleball courts? I'm kidding. It's a box of pickleball.
So much pickleball.
So much. Councilmember Barrington, any other questions?
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Hefta?
If you would, just briefly, on a higher level, talk about any cost run-ups that you've had due to inflation, recession during this time period, just a brief thought on that.
You mean, there's anything like that going on? We haven't experienced any. No, it's been significant. A couple, it's sort of the perfect storm of the inflation, the shortage of materials, the shortage of labor, the interest rate rise, and the concern that comes with all of that, all contributes to our reason frankly for being here, is we need some flexibility in being able to go forward and do that. We came in with an expectation that we'd have a full complement of builders joining with us to go forward and get going, and we don't. We don't have that now. We made a commitment, however, and we're going to honor that, and we're going to get started, and you're going to see Chambers Road built from Hess to Stro in one segment, and the other major infrastructure within the community all comes with this first particular segment of development. And we're going to honor that and get going and get that done.
Great. Councilmember Wilks?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions. Thanks for being here, Mr. Elliott.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
All right, so I am going to open up this for public comment at 7:35. Anybody from the public wishing to make comments on this amendment? Seeing that we'll close it at 7:35 and bring you back to the council for any final comments. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find that this agreement, is it beneficial to the community, beneficial to our citizens? And I find this is a well-done agreement in all three phases. Once again, I will point out that there have been quite a few things that have come out of this development that I find beneficial to our community. I find switching back to letters of credit beneficial to our community. It's cost us money, and we've taken cash in the front end before to build a traffic light 10 years later, and it's double the cost, and that costs our citizens money. And we've always been under the agreement or the guidance that growth pays for growth. And I believe that this is a better situation for both the town, the citizens of Parker, and for the developers. Instead of coming up with money upfront, being able to, I don't say finance, but schedule those monies, those outlays at later times, I believe is a better situation for everybody. So again, everything from my favorite dendritic word to Chambers Road to this system here, we are partners with our developers, and I thank you, Mr. Elliott, and your group for being our partners, and I look forward to the community that you're going to build, sir.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, I just, I can appreciate that as a land developer, you're having a hard time getting the home developers to come in due to all of the rising costs of everything right now, and I can appreciate that you're still holding your end of the bargain and getting the roads developed and finished, so thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's important for the town to be flexible in interesting times, and these are interesting times in the land development world, as Mr. Elliott has indicated. We still have the assurance of getting what we need, what we've, for lack of a better term, contracted for. Mr. Elliott is good, and he would like to provide that, so if letters of credit helps, I'm supportive of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, I would like to also thank Mr. Elliott for being here and for working with us, and I think this is a win-win for everyone, and so I am supportive as well.
And Councilor Hefta?
Yes, just looking over that Sixth Amendment to amended restated Stro Ranch Hess Anexation Agreement, there are quite a few changes on there that our staff did, and also I'd like to point out that Mr. Elliott did state that, you know, our staff is very professional, and they drive a tough bargain. And that's a tribute to our staff, our public works and engineering, and good, fair persons, developers with integrity can appreciate that like Mr. Elliott. So thank you all for your hard work.
Great. With that, I'll entertain a motion on this agreement.
I move to approve the Sixth Amendment to amended and restated Stro Ranch Hess Anexation Agreement Northern Property.
Second?
Motion is made by council member Barrington, seconded by council member Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is we're going to have contracts over $500,000. Council, we're going to split this into two presentations, but it's going to be five total motions for you. So the first up is the purchase of a back truck in stormwater operations with the, Mr. Gilbert. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Well, sir, thank you.
This evening, and it's actually a jetpack, jetpacking truck that we're talking about this evening.
Nice.
It's a big unit. It's costing a lot of money. It's something that has been overdue, I believe, in our organization. We'll talk about that over the next week. Public Works and Engineering requesting your approval to proceed with purchase of this jetpack truck for the stormwater department. This equipment was justified through the capital improvement committee and included as part of the 2023 budget, which has been approved by council. The Stormwater Division evaluated nine units and came upon this one that we are engaging in purchasing. The company, it's called an Echo Star, which is their model number on this unit, and the company that makes the EcoCycler demonstrated their EcoCycler, which is a larger unit. The Echo Star is a slightly smaller unit. It meets our design parameters and expectations in being able to get into some of the tighter areas that we have. So we actually moved away from the EcoCycler, which was out of under it, to this Echo Star unit. The town is meeting the procurement requirements for this purchase through the use of the Houston Gallus and their council cooperative bid, H206-20, and we are anticipating a minimum of 15-year life expectancy with this piece of equipment. Years ago, the town had purchased a used trailer-mounted version of a jetpacking system. It was undersized to begin with. It was used, and in 2017, we did find that we hired that piece of equipment from our fleet inventory. Since then, the town has contracted the service out to local vendors to perform the service for us. Our employees still go out every day that that unit is here, that we have the contractor on-site doing the work, supporting that operation. The purchase of this unit will allow us to perform that operation with our staff in a much more efficient manner than we have been. Currently, we just spend about $26,000 to $27,000 a year for that service, and we are only getting to a small portion of our infrastructure each year with that service being provided. So by purchasing this piece of equipment, it is our goal and our intent to perform a much further amount of efficient and needed requirement for our MS4 program. Our MS4 program is what is called a municipal separate storm sewer system, and we are bound by that to engage in activities of performing maintenance, removing debris, sediment, those types of things from our infrastructure so that we can do two things. One, improve and keep the water quality that's going to Cherry Creek at a very high level. And then second, we also reduce the impacts from stormwater through our stormwater system. The unit is also equipped with a recycle system, so a lot of times when we go out with previous units, we would have to bring our own water with us to do the jetting. This system allows us to pull water from the stream, use that water, and do the jetting as well as vacuum, which will reduce the impact on the water usage and also improve our ability to be more efficient because we'll be able to stay out and feel longer. And with that, I think that I am here to answer any follow-up questions that you might have related to this.
Great. Thanks, sir. Council questions for Mr. Gilbert? Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, so do you guys know what the annual maintenance cost to get us that full 15 years that you're anticipating is going to be? Obviously, it's going to need routine maintenance to, kind of like we change the oil on our cars. Do you have a rough cost of that?
I'm anticipating that we're probably going to be starting out somewhere in the neighborhood, probably very little the first year, two years that it's under warranty, and then after that, I anticipate probably about $6,000 to start with and increasing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Do you by chance know, maybe on an average, how much we spend per year on contractors? And how beneficial is this to hire? I mean, obviously, we wouldn't do it if it wasn't beneficial, but talk to me a little bit about how beneficial it is to have our own piece of equipment versus hiring contractors.
So in my presentation, identified, we currently are spending about $26,000 a year annually to have that contracted service come out. They don't provide, they all they provide is a piece of equipment, and the operator for that piece of equipment wears the money and everything else. I would anticipate that if we were to go out and do a full contract, it would probably be in the $60,000 range for a full service.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So $26,000 to contract it, plus our staff has to be there anyway, so by us doing it ourselves, it sounds like it is going to be more cost-effective in the long run.
I agree, so. Based on what councilmember Rivera just asked, we're probably looking at $60,000 or more annually to perform the current level of service maintenance that we're going to... One of the things I wanted to try to highlight was, we're only doing a minimal amount. Years ago, when stormwater was first created, you could go to some of our manholes and pop the cover, and there was so much sediment in the manhole or in the pit that you could actually see the imprint of our manhole cover. Today, that's not the case, but we would like to be able to be as efficient as we can, and obviously, after storms like we had several years ago, be able to deploy this piece of equipment to go clean those grates, those mesh pieces from our inboards and those types of things.
So it gets all the leaves and branches and trash that goes down into our stormwater system?
There's a lot of spiders.
Oof, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Well, just to touch upon the fairness that we have in our system, there's a committee that reviews these requests. Can you talk a little bit about that committee and what number this request was?
I will try to recall what the number was. It ranked very high in the scoring process. The committee is made up of internal divisions or representatives from each of the departments. The justification is written for those reviewers, and each of us scored... that we have. So we actually moved away from the Eco Cyclr, which was out of under it, to this Echo Star unit. The town is meeting the procurement requirements for this purchase through the use of the Houston-Galluston area council cooperative bid, H206-20. And we are anticipating a minimum of 15-year life expectancy with this piece of equipment. Years ago, the town had purchased a used trailer-mounted version of a jetpacking system. It was undersized to begin with. It was used. And in 2017, we did find that we hired that piece of equipment from our fleet inventory. Since then, the town has contracted the service out to local vendors to perform the service for us. Our employees still go out every day that that unit is here, that we have the contractor on site doing the work, supporting that operation. The purchase of this unit will allow us to perform that operation with our staff in a much more efficient manner than we have been. Currently, we just spend about $26,000 to $27,000 a year for that service. And we are only getting to a small portion of our infrastructure each year with that service being provided. So by purchasing this piece of equipment, it is our goal and our intent to perform a much further amount of efficient and needed requirement for our MS4 firm. Our MS4 firm is what is called an municipal separate storm sewer system. And we are bound by that to engage in activities of performing maintenance, removing debris, sediment, those types of things from our infrastructure so that we can do two things. One, improve and keep the water quality that's going to Cherry Creek at a very high level. And then, second, we also reduce the impacts from stormwater through our stormwater system. The unit is also equipped with a recycle system. So a lot of times when we go out with previous units, we would have to bring our own water with us to do the jetting. This system allows us to pull water from the stream, use that water, and do the jetting as well as vacuum, which will reduce the impact on the water usage. It will also improve our ability to be more efficient because we'll be able to stay out and feel longer. And with that, I think that I am here to answer any follow-up questions that you might have related to this.
Great. Thanks, sir. Council questions for Mr. Gilbert. Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, so do you guys know what the annual maintenance cost to get us that full 15 years that you're anticipating is going to be? Obviously, it's going to need routine maintenance to, kind of like we change the oil on our cars. Do you have a rough cost of that?
I'm anticipating that we're probably going to be starting out somewhere in the neighborhood of probably very little the first year, two years that it's under warranty. And then after that, I anticipate probably about $6,000 to start with and increasing there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Do you by chance know, maybe on an average, how much we spend per year on contractors? And how beneficial is this to hire? I mean, obviously, we wouldn't do it if it wasn't beneficial. But talk to me a little bit about how beneficial it is to have our own piece of equipment versus hiring contractors.
So in my presentation, identified, we currently are spending about $26,000 a year annually to have that contracted service come out. They don't provide, they all they provide is a piece of equipment, and the operator for that piece of equipment wears the money and everything else. I would anticipate that if we were to go out and do a full contract, it would probably be in the $60,000 range for a full service.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So $26,000 to contract it, plus our staff has to be there anyway. So by us doing it ourselves, it's, sounds like it is going to be more cost-effective in the long run.
Based on what Councilmember Rivera just asked, we're probably looking at $60,000 or more annually to perform the current level of service maintenance that we're going to. One of the things I wanted to try to highlight was, we're only doing a minimal amount. Years ago, when stormwater was first created, you could go to some of our manholes and pop the cover, and there was so much sediment in the manhole or in the pit that you could actually see the imprint of our manhole cover. Today, that's not the case. But we would like to be able to be as efficient as we can. And then, obviously, after storms like we had several years ago, be able to deploy this piece of equipment to go clean those grates, those mesh pieces from our inboards and those types of things.
So it gets all the leaves and branches and trash that goes down into our stormwater system?
There's a lot of spiders.
Oof, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Well, just to touch upon the fairness that we have in our system, there's a committee that reviews these requests. Can you talk a little bit about that committee and what number this request was?
I will try to recall what the number was. It ranked very high in the scoring process. The committee is made up of internal divisions or representatives from each of the departments. The justification is written for those reviewers, and each of us score those as part of the overall picture of our capital improvement projects for the year. And then that goes through the finance process as well to ensure that what we're asking for money-wise and budgeted for is an established good practice and makes sense for the town.
So essentially, there's many, there's many eyes on this purchase. There's many opportunities for dissent or further information. And that builds a lot of integrity into the process for these committee and these purchases.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Sorry, just one more question. Is this coming out of stormwater or general fund?
It is coming out of stormwater fund.
Thank you.
Great. With that, I'm going to open this up for public comment at 7:47. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on this contract? See, and then we'll close it at 7:47. I'll bring it back to council for any final debate or motion.
No, I just would state, stormwater is a very limited fund. We cannot spend those dollars on many things. And when we do find something, it's very important to take advantage of it. Again, and I'll state it's important, we have our guys and gals that are going to be doing the work now and not contractors. And kind of goes back to the previous testimony where, you know, when we're building a trail, we do a better job, maybe, than a contractor because there's buy-in from our community and our, a lot of our staffers, majority of our staffers live in this community, and it's their town too. So I think it's a win-win win there. And I think it's very, very important to touch and point out what Councilmember Wilks said. When we look at buying things, it's not just a $600,000 cost. There is an ongoing cost for 15 years that gets added on top of that. And, you know, budget is not just about initial outlay. It's about maintenance throughout the life of that item. So, well-stated, Councilmember Wilks.
Councilmember Wilks, any final comments?
Yeah, honestly, I like the maintenances, and I say only lightly, but only $6,000 a year because, you know, like we've determined, it's costing us a lot more to contract it out and a lot more to have other people other than us. So I'm very happy with that.
Councilmember Dyak?
No, we've been here about this for many months. I'm glad to see the time has come to purchase. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for your hard work.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion on this back truck purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Dyak Rivera.
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. I'm sorry, the jetpack. Jetpacking, I'll get it. When it comes down my street, I'll know it. All right.
Well, you didn't talk about that part.
All right. Next up, we have a series of four contracts. Mr. Ekstrom will be presenting as one, and then we will vote on four separate motions. So I'm going to read them into the record.
Thank you.
Just as he gets started. So the first is for the design contract, CIP 22-051-AS for the Town Hall Expansion Project. Next is the First Amendment to the Design Contract, CIP 22-051-AS for the Town Hall Expansion Project. Third is Construction Contract, CIP 22-051-CI for the Town Hall Expansion Project. And last is First Amendment to the Construction Contract, CIP 22-051-CI for the Town Hall Expansion Project.
That's mouthful.
And it's up to you to clarify what all that means.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back. I presented, I don't know, a couple of months ago on the CMGC selection method. So this is kind of a follow-up to that. The process is now, the selection process is now complete, and we're ready to enter into contracts with an architect and with the construction manager. So the contract before you is for a contract with the Anderson-Masondale Architects. Next slide, please. Oh, you got it? Okay. There we go. So I've got just a quick vicinity map here. Everybody knows the project, Town Hall, and the expansion direction is in the east direction there. I've provided just a summary of what we know about the project currently. So we're proposing about a 32,000 square foot, two-story expansion. We are going to explore an 1,800 square foot expansion to the council chambers here to the west. The project does include select interior renovations to existing Town Hall. We will be exploring a realignment of Pike's Peak Avenue to recover parking loss by the expansion. And we will explore addition of one new parking lot on the east side of Pike's Peak Avenue. Project includes rehabilitation of existing parking lots. And finally, landscape and hardscape improvements. So a little bit about the selection process. We advertised an RFQ for architectural engineering services. We received responses from six firms. The panel shortlisted to three firms based on written qualifications. We then conducted interviews and reviewed preliminary fees. We followed up on references and leveled scope and fees among the top two firms. And the panel ended up selecting Anderson-Masondale Architects. So a little bit about the contracting process. The town architects sign a contract for the terms and conditions of service. And the architect delivers services in a series of four contract amendments. The First Amendment is for preliminary design services. The Second Amendment is for design development and entitlement services. And the Third Amendment is for construction documentation services. And the final Fourth Amendment, if everything goes as planned, is for construction administration services. So in conclusion, staff recommends Town Council award a design contract with Anderson-Masondale for the terms and conditions of service, with the understanding that services will be delivered in a series of four contract amendments. Each amendment will be presented to council for award as the design advances with check-ins at future study sessions to provide updates on the design and pre-con process. The overall design contract for this project, including all four amendments, is anticipated to be in the $2 to $2.5 million range, depending on project scope. And the contract duration spans a time of approximately 2.5 years. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Hefta, can you kick us off?
Sure. Could you mention a little bit about the construction manager piece on this? I didn't quite get that.
Well, I will get to that in the third presentation here tonight. It is with JHL Constructors, and they were selected in tandem with the architect. So I will be getting to that selection process.
That was my thought process on it. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'll save my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wilks?
I'll save mine.
Councilmember Rivera?
Offhand, I'm sorry. Mr. Ekstrom, offhand, has AMD done work for us before?
Yes. They were the architect of record on the police station project and on the Discovery Park and the library.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to open it up for public comment at 7:55. Anyone wishing to make public comment on design contract, CIP 22-051-AS? See, and then I'll close it at 7:55. We'll start in reverse order. Councilmember Rivera, any final thoughts?
No, I think that, well, maybe a little. No, I think, I appreciate the work done, the thoroughness on this and selecting an architect. Anderson-Masondale's outstanding architect. They did incredible work, leads work, lead certified work on the police station. And the fascinating thing about the police station is the ability for growth within that building. It's built to be built on. And I look forward to what they can bring to Town Hall. Inevitably, the question will be, you know, raised, or the statement will be raised, that, oh, it's just growth of government. We're getting bigger and bigger. And I will state, you know, for the record, that this organization has existed in too small of a space for too long. We have been very, very thorough with keeping government within control and saving dollars and waiting to do this until the cash arose. And we are in that situation now that we are simply answering the needs of an existing government. So in my opinion, this is not growth of government.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah, I second that. And I feel, you know, if anybody actually goes and dives into where our government is spread out in all the different buildings, it'll be nice to have everybody under one roof and be able to collaborate in a much easier, easier way.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the work and the effort that's done. I'm glad to see we have two firms that are presented before us here that are willing to partner with us in building out Town Hall to what I believe to be a full build-out. So thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yep. Thank you. No comments right now.
Councilmember Hefta?
Just to tag on to what Councilmember Rivera was saying, when a town has the funds and has saved the funds, that's the time to approve. That's the time to look to the long term, to be able to utilize those funds when you can, not when the town is in full build-out and the town will be looking to repair more roads or use those existing funds for basic infrastructure. So we still have a little ways to fall full build-out in our town as we're 75% out. So now is the time to utilize these funds and to start these projects to improve our buildings and to tear down some of those 1970s buildings and to get us into the modern age. We did do a tour, most of us, and I'm sure Councilmember Wilks will do a tour as well, if she hasn't done already, to see some of those existing structures that are very outdated. So this is money well-spent. It is not growth in government. It is necessary. It is needed. And the justifications for these projects, we have been briefed on every step of the way.
With that, I will entertain a motion on the terms and conditions for the Town Hall Expansion Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Dyak Rivera.
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. All right. So next, so I misspoke. We're actually going to have four presentations on these and then a motion on each one. So this next one is on the First Amendment to the Design Contract that you just approved.
Exactly. Yeah. It is going to be a little bit of repetitive content, so I'll try to skip through it as quickly as I can. This, as the mayor said, is the First Amendment to the contract that you just approved. There will be four amendments, if everything goes as planned. So you'll get an opportunity to see this every step of the way, see what the costs are. So I think it's the best approach. So with that said, we've got the same vicinity slide in here, same scope of work. I won't go back through this. I have provided an outline here of what's included roughly in the Amendment One services. So I'll try to kind of rattle through these quickly. So the architect will be discovering and verifying the original construction drawings, discovering and researching the original entitlement documents, include site plans, plaques, discovering and integrating the town furnished design survey and geotechnical report. We've already got a three-day workshop scheduled with directors and the town manager to go over the program that was presented by StanTech and to verify the results of that program study. Architect will be developing concept drawings and renderings, advancing the approved concept design to 30% level, including all subconsultant disciplines, conducting meetings with engineering, planning, and building staff to understand codes and the entitlement process, assisting staff and the construction manager with developing a cost model and a project budget, and assisting staff presenting the concept and schematic designs to Town Council at study sessions, and finally, assisting staff with public outreach efforts. So in conclusion, staff recommends Town Council award a First Amendment to the Design Contract with Anderson-Masondale for preliminary design services for the Town Hall Expansion Project in the amount of $289,100. Services are anticipated to take four months to complete, and construction is tentatively scheduled to start the first quarter of 2024. Staff and consultant will return to council in future study sessions to provide updates on the design and pre-con process. Questions?
All right, let's go. Questions? John?
I have no questions. Again, I just, I appreciate the efforts of our staff and again, look forward to starting on this project.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'll save my questions still. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
None. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
I'll save mine.
Councilmember Rivera?
No questions.
All right. With that, I'll open it up at 8:02 for public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment on the First Amendment? See, and then we'll close it at 8:02, and I'll go back in reverse order. Councilmember Rivera?
No. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda on the First Amendment.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is the terms and condition for the construction contract of the Town Hall Expansion Project.
All right. Again, some of this is repetitive. So this is the construction contract with JHL Constructors. They will be the project construction manager, general contractor. So same vicinity slide, same scope of work. So a little bit about the contractor selection process, very similar to the architect selection process, where we advertised an RFQ for construction manager services. We actually received responses from 10 firms. The panel shortlisted to three firms based on written qualifications. We conducted interviews and reviewed preliminary fees and general conditions cost, followed up on references, and the panel eventually selected JHL Constructors. And I will mention that JHL is currently working for Parker Water San on their headquarters out at Ritter Hess Reservoir. And we received good feedback, really positive feedback, from Parker Water. So a little bit about the contracting process, very similar to the architect one. Town and JHL sign a contract for the terms and conditions of service. And services in this contract are delivered in a series of two contract amendments. The First Amendment is for pre-construction services. The Second Amendment adds the guaranteed maximum price to the contract and officially starts construction. And construction is tentatively scheduled to start the first quarter of 2024 and end approximately first quarter of 2025, depending on scope. So in conclusion, staff recommends Town Council award a construction contract with JHL Constructors for the terms and conditions of service, with the understanding that services will be delivered in a series of two contract amendments. Each amendment will be presented to council for award as the design advances with check-ins at future study sessions to provide updates on the design and pre-con process. The overall construction contract for this project, including the two amendments, is anticipated to be in the $23 to $26 million range, depending on scope, schedule, and market conditions. And the contract duration spans a time period of 2.5 years. So any questions?
Bob, do you want to just, before we get to questions on this, do you want to just do the amendment to show them what's being amended, and then we'll do two motions at the end? We'll just have questions on the Ts and Cs and the amendment, all the same?
So this is the First Amendment to the construction contract, same vicinity slide and same scope of work. Same vicinity slide and same scope of work. I've listed just roughly what pre-construction services consist of. So, they'll attend and participate in design progress meetings. JHL will develop a preliminary cost model, develop and update the 30% design estimate, develop and update the 60% design estimate, develop and update the 90% design estimate, develop and update a construction schedule, perform constructability reviews of the design, forecast market escalations and lead times, and procure at-risk materials. Part of the pre-con service is developing the guaranteed maximum price proposal, which consists of three things: pre-qualifying subs, preparing and soliciting bid packages, and preparing the final GMP proposal. And then finally, they'll wrap up with securing construction permits, and they'll prep labor, materials, and equipment for construction. So, with that, staff recommends Town Council award a First Amendment to the construction contract with JHL for pre-con services for the Town Hall Expansion Project in the amount of $49,500. Services are anticipated to take approximately 15 months to complete. Construction is tentatively scheduled to start the first quarter of '24. Staff and contractor will check in with council at study sessions to provide updates on the design and pre-con process. Questions?
All right, Council. So, you're asking questions on the Ts and Cs as well as on the First Amendment. So, Councilmember Dayak, I'll start off with you.
Again, no questions. I think it was a good process and appreciate the efforts.
Councilmember Barrington?
So, just out of curiosity, so I mean, I've heard that our building and planning department is very strict with, they just don't rubber stamp everything that comes through, I've heard. How does that work with us? Like, when it's our project?
That's a great question.
Losing ourselves?
So, I've been here, I've been here almost 20 years. And I've delivered multiple projects for the town. And we, I follow the same process as a private developer. So, I submit, I submit it to the planning department. They review it, provide comments. Our engineering department also reviews, provides the same review as a private developer. So, we follow the exact same process as a private developer. I have to post signs here when we get ready to go to, for approvals by planning commission and Town Council. So, this project will be back in front of you guys with the entitlements middle, probably a site plan amendment, and having you guys approve that, as well as planning commission. So, in the building department, the construction drawings get submitted at the end of the process. Just like any private developer, they, we have to submit our building drawings to the building department. They review them for code. And the architect responds to comments. So, it's exactly the same process. We get inspections in the field, just like any private development. There's, you know, I've had multiple conversations with building inspectors about why this and why that. And we just do it. And so, to, I guess to answer a question, exact same process.
So, no special treatment?
Correct.
The opposite.
If not, probably more stricter.
And, and so, if everything goes as planned, we could start seeing this, like, is in '26? '27?
Well, right now, we're forecasting starting construction in the first quarter of 2024.
Right.
And finishing up in the first quarter of 2025. But that's going to depend on how much renovation scope we do to this facility, because the renovation scope is part of the project. It's not just expansion, but it's renovating this space, including expanding, possibly expanding the council chambers. So, the schedule, it's a little premature, you know, for me to say, stand up here and say, oh, it's going to be this date or this date. But generally, I think it's about a 12 to 15-month project, construction project, and a 12-month design effort.
And when all is said and done, are we going to have to argue about who sits in this chair?
I'll let Michelle.
I was going to say, Bob, don't touch that one. Don't.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Hefta?
I was just thinking that 2.5 years was a little aggressive on this. Am I correct on that?
I don't know about a gra, I think it feels about right. I do. But it will depend a little bit on market conditions. You know, it's so volatile right now, and we may elect to do some early buyout just to beat the market. So, that's why we wanted to get a contractor on board at the same time as an architect, so we have that flexibility to pivot with, you know, the industry and what the market's doing. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilks?
Yeah. So, you guys had talked about doing a redesign of Parks, of Pike's Peak for the parking that's going, that's, I'm not full, for the parking that we're going to be losing. Is that going to affect the trail that we have running there and like that little exercise park or?
No. This is on the east side.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we will be exploring adding a parking lot on east of the road where the road curves and ties into Main Street, if that makes sense?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect.
Councilmember Wilks?
I'm sorry. I saved all my questions to the end. Is the plan for the expansion, because I'm trying to play catch-up here, is the plan for it to hold all of the current staff plus like any growth that we have on staff? Or is it just to alleviate, alleviate the pressure that we have with everybody crammed in one building?
So, it's kind of a complicated question. We are moving all of the staff that's over at Old Town Hall, IT, cultural, and CIP. There's three project managers over there now. We will be relocating them to the expansion space. And then there's shuffling around that's going to happen. And I'll probably be able to explain that better in a study session. I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the slides with me tonight. But eventually, some of the departments that are currently housed in Town Hall now are going to move over to the expansion space. And some of the departments here are going to expand. But we're going to be reviewing that in the next coming weeks with the architect. I mentioned we have a three-day design workshop scheduled at the end of January. And that's something we're going to be reviewing right out of the gate, who goes where.
Perfect.
Yeah.
The last question I had is just the contract deadlines. Councilmember Hefta touched on that about 2.5s. You're seeming aggressive, and I think it depends on the contractor and the situation. But is there safeties in place to keep us at the same bid that we're currently getting if it does go over that two and a half years, if it goes into three years or three and a half years?
Well, we don't have a bid with this contracting method. We've selected the contractor. We are hiring them for pre-construction services for the $49,500. And the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price, which they will develop once the construction drawings are done, that will get submitted to the town at the end of the process. So, like, at the end of this year, first part of '24, they'll submit that. And assuming we're still in budget, we'll bring that back to council. And you guys will have the ability to approve or decline the guaranteed maximum price. So, there isn't a bid that?
I'll rephrase, because I see the confusion.
Okay.
Once we approve what the cost is going to be, if the contract goes past their initiative timeframe that they've given us, are we still, is there something written in the contract that guarantees whatever price we do finally approve on?
Yes.
Even if it goes past their completion, anticipated completion date, we'll still be able to expand that at the same price, amend that at the same price?
They're, they're bound to the guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
Provided that the scope doesn't, provided the town doesn't change the scope substantially.
Okay.
So, if we decide to add another wing to the, to the building, they're entitled to re, you know, submit a price for that addition. As far as time goes, they also submit a schedule with the guaranteed maximum price. And scheduling and construction is a little more complex, weather-dependent. So, if we get some weather, they're entitled to an extension of contract time, depending on how severe the weather events are. There are other things in the contract that would allow them an extension of contract time. So, I hope I'm being clear on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Again, same, same question. JHL is a big house. Have they done work for the town before?
They have not.
They have not.
But their qualifications were strong.
Yeah.
We had 10 firms submit, and we checked with Parker Water. They had great things to say about them. What impressed me, too, with JHL is, I think about 35 of their employee base are Parker-based. And they really came in delivering a Parker Proud speech and really enjoyed hearing that. They understand the importance that Town Hall serves this community, and they really want to be a part of that.
Outstanding. And then, real quick, just for clarification, this is not just an addition. We're talking about retrofitting and even modularization of the existing space, correct? To make it, to make it more beneficial to movements as our government changes over and departments age out and et cetera. So, it's not just adding on. We're also talking about retrofitting to a better layout on the existing Town Hall, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'm going to open this up for public comment at 8:18. Anybody wishing to make public comment on these two projects? Seeing then, we'll close it at 8:18. Council, any further questions?
No, I just, just a quick, I just wanted to note, and in the First Amendment, I noticed a forecasting clause. And I just wanted to state, that's well done. I mean, obviously, it worked for Parks and the Building of Brian in acquiring the products before the products were needed because of the logistics we were all having and experiencing. And I don't know if it existed prior to the current market, but I'm glad it's in there. And I believe a big house like JHL has the power to do just that, acquire the lines and get those products in at a timely fashion. So, I think that's, that was well done on staff's behalf, and thank you very much. And if you haven't had a chance, take a look at Parker Water and Sand Building. It is absolutely amazing. It will be an asset to our community. And I think JHL's done a great job, and I look forward to them working on this building.
Councilmember Wilks, any finals?
No. Thank you.
Councilmember Dayak?
No, I'm, I'm all out of words about this project. I think it's going to be great.
Councilmember Barrington?
So, I, before being elected, I, I remember just driving by in a lot of the buildings and thinking that there were a lot of town buildings. And I had obviously never been in the private offices here. I had no idea. It just seems like this is such a big building already. I didn't realize until, you know, getting in here, we are bursting at the seams. Wow. Guess it's time to go.
Time's up, Councilmember Barrington.
And so, just, sorry, I don't even know how that happened. But, so anyway, we're bursting at the seams. I'm just distracted now. But I think it's great that we are being proactive versus, well, we are being a little reactive because we are bursting at the seams, but I know we are being proactive, and I think this is a much-needed project. And thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Hefta?
I, I think everyone's said it all, so I've got nothing. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. All right. So, I'll entertain a motion on the terms and conditions piece of the expansion project.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve staff recommendations as part of the regular agenda.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Wilks. Rivera?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dayak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. I'll also entertain a motion on the First Amendment.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Second?
Those were. Motion was made by Councilmember Dayak, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dayak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dayak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And we're adjourned to 8:21. But don't go anywhere.
There's more.